First thing we'll do is have. Five positions for the flag.
No.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice in our heart.
The next thing we'll do is clerk's going to take the roll call.
Dale Ames.
Present.
Jeff Keeland.
Present.
Kelly Carroll.
Here.
Mary Weyher. Jason Alders.
Here.
Kristen Moan. Harold Jorgensen.
Present.
Robert Schiller.
Yep.
Elizabeth Stockman.
Here.
Okay, the next thing is the, we'll have the clerk read the meeting policy.
The agenda as printed or amended will be followed so all necessary needed actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, they must first be recognized by the chairman. Second, state your names and address for the record. And third, you will have no more than three minutes to state your comments or concerns. Copies of the agenda are available on the back table. And there is a sign-in sheet and a sign-up sheet for floor items if you'd like to speak. Please turn all cell phones off.
Okay, the next thing is, would somebody like to make a motion to approve or amend tonight meeting agenda, May 22nd, 2018?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner. Carroll made the motion. Do we have?
Second.
Commissioner Moan made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we're going to do is approve or amend the April 24th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Commissioner Alders made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Schiller seconded it. Do we have a discussion on this? See and none. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First of all, is there any floor items out there? Anybody want to speak on the floor? Okay, we'll go, first of all, I'm going to read there was a public hearing canceled tonight, and it was a zoning map amendment by Josh Peterson and Eldon Farbs for a property owned at 5259 Viking Boulevard. The property owner did not sign the application, so the city cannot allow a rezoning request without the property owner's consent. So this one was canceled. We're going to open the second public hearing at this time. And this is a request by Gary Udi for a property owned at 6080 Gypsy Valley Road. PD is 14-33-25-31-003 regarding the following three matters. Lot split and conditional use permit to allow a subdivision of this 19.71 acre parcel with a flag lot access to the parcel is required in section 10-3-4, G of the city subdivision ordinance, and also a variance to allow access by the existing 33-foot driveway easement from Gypsy Valley Road. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to give the description of this property. Or not the clerk, but the planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you recall, Mr. Udi, back in July of last year, had applied, made application for a similar request. At the time, he had just applied for a lot split and a conditional use permit for the flag lot. The city attorney recommended that because of the 33-foot driveway easement that exists, that he also required, applied for a variance. Because the flag lot regulations state that access is only allowed when ownership is out to a public road. So this time, we have the three requests. The property is located on Gypsy Valley Road. The proposal is splitting a 19.71 acre parcel. There's an existing pole barn on it. And the proposal would be to build two houses, one on each lot. So the one with the pole barn would be 10 acres to accommodate the size of that structure, and the other one would be the remaining 9 point whatever acres. This graphic shows the density evaluation in the neighborhood and the Udi property, and that there are currently just two, two lots within that 40 acres within which he's currently located right here. So with the city's allowance of eight lots for 40 acres, there is room for further subdivision under that regulation. The next map here shows a wetland delineation. There are a couple of small wetlands on the north side, and then a large wetland that encompasses most of the south side. So there's, it's, there's no possibility to achieve any more than the two lots requested based on the lot width is just over 600 feet, and we require a 300-foot lot width for individual lots. So previously, we had evaluated how this might lay out if a subdivision were to occur in the surrounding area. We always take into consideration adjacent property and neighborhood potential for when we're looking at splits. The Udi property is very unique. It is not unlike others in the city that also have easement access. It was approved on township days when flag lots were more often used than they are now. Generally, we still prohibit flag lots unless we can show that there are unique circumstances. And this is a case where it is possibly justified, and that's part of your job tonight is to make a determination in that regard. So the tough thing here is, is that the city engineer has recommended a couple options, one being a cul-de-sac here, just to serve the Murdesorf property and/or Udi's property and as a small little cluster up on its own. The lot to the north, right here, cannot be subdivided. And this piece and this piece to the north have potential to be subdivided at a later date. So what we're trying to achieve in the long term is an east-west street between Passalt and Gypsy Valley. So one option would be to come through on the north end here and serve these larger properties in the future. The reason that the city engineer does not want a full intersection here, or an intersection at the curve is a dangerous location, and creates some issues. So if it were to happen, as he has shown here, it would require a realignment of Gypsy Valley would actually become an east-west road. And then, I don't know if we would rename this or what would happen, but that's one option. So Mr. Udi has shown that he is in the plans, that he is offering up 66 feet of right-of-way across this parcel that he owns. His hands are tied in many ways because he's only got the 33 feet out to Gypsy Valley as an easement. He's offered to buy additional land from Murdesorf as well as Miss Troy, and neither property owner is interested. So your job tonight is to determine what is reasonable under the variance rules and under the conditional use permit rules. We have to show that he is demonstrating practical difficulties, either with regard to natural features, the physical constraints, the street and lot arrangements that currently exist, and ask yourself if what he's doing is a reasonable use of that property. Subdivision is something that is afforded to other property owners with a 20-acre piece. Like I said, it would only be a maximum of two parcels there. So if you determine, A, that he does meet the practical difficulties rule, then secondly, your job would be to determine what options you prefer for street arrangements, or, you know, are you going to require him to dedicate the 66 feet? Or are, the variance could also allow him just to access those two lots the way it currently is via that 33-foot easement? So we can have a further discussion then. But these two concepts were older concepts, looking at how this could lay out. But you can see that if we wait, you know, I guess in my mind, the circumstances aren't going to change whether it be now, or in 10 years, or 20 years. So, you know, you have the option of determining that this is a premature subdivision without street access, but it's not going to change until we address it. And to put the burden here upon property owners that are adjacent and to the north in extending a cul-de-sac down, for instance, to serve another property when this lot doesn't need the street frontage, that becomes a burden to these other property owners. So to me, it seems logical to try to address it now. And I guess the outcome is the same now or in the future. And at that, I think I'll just open it up for any questions or comments from the applicants.
Okay, thank you. This time, does the, Mr. Udi, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Just give your name.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Coyle. I'm a real estate lawyer and land use lawyer with Larkin-Hoffman, and I represent Mr. Udi, and I have so for probably 20 years. Appreciate your time this evening. Thanks for hearing us out on this application. I think your staff has done a terrific job of outlining the issue that's before you. We certainly sincerely hope that you can support it. Just a couple of things to just follow up on what Ms. Stockman has provided to you. Mr. Udi intends to have these two lots used by his children for their residences, so just so you know that. The easement across the adjacent property allows for this access, at least as to the one lot, and we understand the variance requirement and the CUP requirement because of the unique circumstance that we find ourselves in. But in effect, I guess our, our representation to you would be, we have a unique circumstance that's caused by this easement situation and the, and the city's still unresolved question as to how the final right-of-way plan will be configured. Mr. Udi is willing to dedicate the 66 feet across the front of his property in advance of the city making that decision, so that you know at least as to his property, that that land is available. He's, he's attempted to acquire the property, the additional 33 feet across his neighbor's property, to satisfy the city's code requirement up front, but that's just not been possible. But at the end, he's going to be putting his property to a reasonable use. It's a use that's supported by your zoning. It's compatible with the uses of his neighbors around him. And, and we think for that reason, both the conditional use permit along with the lot split and the variance are reasonable and appropriate. And, and with that, we're happy to respond to your questions. If there's questions for Mr. Udi in specific as to the property, happy to respond to those as well. But thank you very much for the chance to visit with you this evening, and we certainly would appreciate your support if possible. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask the clerk of all the legal publications, mailings, and postings that have been completed.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll hear a comments from the public. Anybody out here would like to address this? And get, speak, get up here and give your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Pia Troy. I live at 20966 Gypsy Valley. So I have the, just slightly over four acre parcel to the north. And I don't have any questions, but I did have a couple of comments. And one, based on the graphs that were just shown, with the option one and option two for the roads. Yeah. Option two, I would really not like because that cuts off part of my property, which my house was built in the early 30s, and it's actually already partially in the street easement anyway, so I'd rather not lose any more of my, but just a comment on that. And also, I, I don't recall being asked to sell property, but I wouldn't be able to anyway because my lot's too small, so it's not really an issue. But I don't recall ever being talked to about purchasing that. Could be forgetting that, because I would have just bought my house before that. Just, I guess for full disclosure, no, I don't want two houses next to me. I know there's going to be one. I'd rather it was just a hayfield, but I know that's not possible. I guess my, my question, or one of my concerns that I wanted to bring up is that the couple times that I've called the city, both when the sign came out on the road this time and before the last hearing, is that the first thing I usually hear is that the houses are for, you know, two children of the property owner. And, you know, that's true. But I think at the end of the day, it's worth keeping in mind that property gets bought and sold all the time. And so whether it's a year, five years, 10 years, it's going to be, should there be two houses, should that lot be subdivided, period? And who the houses are proposed to be for at this time really shouldn't play into it? That's my thought. I guess that's, that's about all I have. I don't, you know, I don't like to come here and try and interfere with what somebody wants to do with their property. But it is right next to me, and it's, it is fairly close, even though, you know, on the map, it's hard to see, but when I'm out in my barn, you know, it's, it's pretty close. And there's a driveway there now, and Mr. Udi did, you know, make a good faith effort to accommodate my concern at the last meeting, which was drainage. So there is a covert put in, so appreciate that, to try to help any drainage problems in that low spot that crosses into my pasture. But I guess that was, that was all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to address this? Yes, give your name and your address, please.
My name is Carol Murdesorf. I have the property with my husband, Michael, at 6070. Mr. Udi did come to us and ask, previous to getting the property, about purchasing extra property to have an, an extra 33 feet. And at that time, we did tell them that we did not want to sell any property. So he did know before he purchased the property. And I have a couple of comments myself. The letter from the Larkin and Hoffman attorneys, number four, section, mentions a minimal traffic impact, because these are going to be two homes for families. But it has been our experience this past winter that there has been a semi-tractor and trailer coming and going morning and night, and a tractor, trailer parked outside quite frequently. If you want a picture of that, I do have a picture for you. Also, the pole barn that is there is slated as an egg building, built for storage. My question to Mr. Udi is, if that building is set for storage, why did you have to build a lean-to out back for your fish house and boat? And what that building is going to be used for? If it is going to be used for the semi-tractor and trailer or other heavy equipment, what impact is that going to have on our tar road out front that all of us had to pay for? Also, the septic system, it looks like on that thing, it looks like it's going to be two tanks for each home that will be pumped? So is there not going to be a drain field for either one?
Yes, there would be. Greenfield says, I think we provide the city with a greenfield, so both, both, both lots.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What you're seeing on the plan is the primary and the secondary septic sites for the drain field. So there'll be, there'll be a drain field and then a backup site, and then there's, yeah, there's always tanks that get in.
Okay, and the preglation tests for, good for that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. And I know, Mr. Coyle, you mentioned the reasonable use of his property. I don't think that his version with the semi-trailer and tractor is the same as our reasonable use of the property. And I could be wrong about that, but that's all I have to say.
Can I have this one?
Yes.
Thank you. Gary Udi, your petitioner, 3157 Berwick Knoll, Brooklyn Park. And I would, I would like to say that, you know, as far as the, as far as the use of the, as far as the use, I'm a developer, and I'm somewhat embarrassed to even have to, have to address this, this, this commissioner of this issue. But where I develop in Lionel Lakes, in Brooklyn Park, in Plymouth, outside storage is not allowed at all. We put the lean-to up and back, so as we pour a concrete floor inside the other egg building, that we could get everything hidden out of, out of sight, so it's not sitting outside for, you know, typical outside storage. That was my concern, and that was my, that was just my, my, my thought process, why that, why that was put up there. That is not going to be used as a business. It is not going to be used other than just for storage of things. We are in the process right now of actually getting a permit through the, through your planning and your city staff as far as putting one house on the site, so that will be, you know, there, we will be within, within the confines of what your ordinance is, as far as having one house on the site. But what we're asking for actually now is a subdivision, so that we can get two lots and still meet all your ordinance requirements, and be able to have two home sites on the sites. And both of my sons are the ones that would be, would be building. The first house is for my son, and the second one would, you know, would also be for him. At least that's, that's what the plan is now. This is not, this is not to be sold on the market. The other thing that I want to make comment on, when I did contact Michael and Carol about purchasing their property, I already owned that 20 acres. I did not, I did not talk to them about buying additional before. We already, we already owned it. So it was after the fact that we realized that we just had, you know, had one easement in there, and if we went for a lot subdivision, we'd have to have two. So we tried to buy, to, to buy the 33 feet. The reason that we didn't address it with Pia is because she already was on a smaller lot, and if, and there was a wetland to the, to the, I guess it would be to the north that would have to go through with, you know, with the driveway. So we never even wasted our, our, you know, time and effort speaking with her, because she already was on a smaller site, and there was certain confinements on that. But if the trailer being parked out there is an issue, that's an outside storage issue. We can certainly make, make that part of the condition or something, that there's no trailers or anything parked outside, because that's always been my, been my objective right from the very beginning, is to have no outside storage visible to any of the, any of the neighbors, because in the, in the, in the more metro area, we, there is no such thing as outside storage. We're, we're just not allowed that. And I don't, myself particularly, condone outside storage either. I like to keep the, keep the site neat and clean. And I think if you have in your packet, you can see there are some pictures of the, you know, that were taken, that I provided Ms. Stockman. You know, of the site, you can see that there's a blocktop driveway going in there, that the grass is mowed along the driveway, the buildings are neat and clean, there is no outside storage whatsoever. There is now, because we're in the process of pouring a concrete floor, or will be, in the, in the, in the, in the one particular building. But we, if, if the issue is of that trailer being outside as something that you feel that should never happen, we can certainly make that a condition, that if, you know, that that trailer is not parked on the site. And I think that was only for a few days, if I remember correctly. So the, the issue is, is that this will not be used as a business. If it is used as a business, I understand very clearly, we'd have to come back and get a conditional use permit, and that would be conditioned upon certain things. But at this point in time, there is no intention of using either one of those sites for businesses. Are there any, any other questions of me?
Not at this time. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there somebody else that would like to address this? Name and address, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Ann Udi, and I'm at 3157 Berwick Knoll in Brooklyn Park, and I'm the applicant's wife. And when we acquired this property, we were very excited about the unique natural features of it, and as well as the feel of the neighborhood, and its rural setting was very appealing to us. And now that our son is ready to build on the site, we're looking to make an additional investment in the community, and our family wants to be good neighbors and continue to take pride in how it's kept there. We certainly respect the rural character of the neighborhood. We want to be good neighbors. We feel this request will end up fitting in very well, so I would just ask that you would please support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make a comment at this time? See and none? We'll come back to Planning and Zoning. Do we have any questions here we'd like to ask Mr. Udi, or?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to clarify a couple things. First of all, I did raise the issue of the storage and what items were being stored on the property, and Mr. Udi has agreed to pay the building permit fees for the pole barn and the lean-to. It will not necessarily be 100% used for agriculture, especially when the house is there. So he did agree to that. And for those of you that weren't here when he built the pole barn, he was the last person to get in under our old rules for egg buildings, when we, when the regulations allowed to include green acres status of other properties, not just in the city. So he was able to, you know, use the production and the total acres toward this green acre status. We have since removed that designation or reference to that green acres as part of our egg definition. And then as far as use, it really should not come into play who's going to live in the home. We're looking at the type of use. It's a single-family residential use. That's all we allow in the RRA zoning. I'm certain that if, you know, the sons are there, or whoever it is, the houses will eventually change hands, as all houses do. So we need to look at the land use, not the ownership pattern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our planner? Somebody on the commission here, have any questions they'd like to ask at this time? See and none? I'll ask again the public if there's anybody in the public that would like to address this, as a floor item. We'll see and none? At this time, is there any kind of recommendations we want to look at this? There's no questions this time? We'll, we'll close it and go to the public, close the public hearing? We'll close it and go to the public, close the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing. Now we're act upon it. What has actually changed since our last meeting with Mr. Udi?
The changes that he has now requested the variance, which, which puts into play the practical difficulties rule. Although the conditional use permit also refers to practical difficulties in that it needs to be based on physical characteristics, street and lot arrangements, and natural features. So being that Mr. Udi bought the lot the way it is, it's, it's a fact that this, you know, situation was not caused by him. So your question is, is this a reasonable request? A, is it reasonable to have two homes there on 20 acres? One on a 10-acre lot and one on a nine-point-something acre lot? And the second question is, if so, then he's, he's requested variance from the accessibility, the 33 feet. So he's either requesting to allow two homes on that 33-foot easement instead of one. We know he doesn't own out to the street. So that's what he's asking for variance from. So then your options would be, do you want him to dedicate right away to the city for either a cul-de-sac or a future through-street? And how that might look? Those are kinds of things we need to chat about.
Actually, this is not landlot because of the 33-foot easement?
No, you're right. Yeah, you're right. He's got, he's got the 33 feet, which used to be the minimum allowed under the old flag lot rules. We now require 66-foot ownership out to a public road, unless it's a situation where there would be no possible future extension of a road, you know, where we would want that full 66-foot width. For instance, if it dead ends at a wetland, or whatever the case may be, we would occasionally allow a 33-foot access. So since there's no way for him to purchase this, we need, you know, to look at other options. Do you think the request is reasonable? And, you know, how do you want to try to address it?
Well, there's, there's a lot of things involved here. If it's 33 feet, you're going to have to have some kind of contract brought up.
Pardon me?
You'll have to have a contract for using that just 33 feet, right?
That's one of the rules, right.
Maintenance, maintenance contract?
Mm-hmm.
What about, what we want done for the driveway? He'd have to have a, he'd have to set aside 66 feet on his property. He wants to do that all the way across his property then?
He is, he is willing to dedicate 66 feet, yes. Whether it be for a cul-de-sac, or whether it be for a through-street, whatever you ask for.
Can we put a cul-de-sac in on 33, only a 33-foot easement?
No. So, yeah, that's, that's the issue at hand, is that he has no way to get out to Gypsy Valley right now with a 66-foot width. So your question is, do you allow two houses on the easement? Or do you, and/or, do you take the 66 feet so that his lot does not impede any future subdivision potential? I guess I would, you know, if you're thinking about allowing it, we either allow it as a dead end. I mean, you have to decide, I guess. Do you prefer a dead-end arrangement, or do you prefer a through-street? I guess in my mind, it makes more sense to go to the north here, like I said, because there's all this vacant land here where this frontage can serve additional lots. And, you know, I guess the intent is just to provide somewhere an east-west connection. You know, whether it happened here, or whether it happens here. It could work both ways, but at least if you have 66 feet here, you are not impeding any future street arrangement. You know, maybe we don't know which way it's going to go now. And acquiring that is, it's easier to vacate it later if you don't need it, you know, than to not ask for it now.
Now, the question is, that easement, he's got that 33 feet going in there. Who owns that? The original people still own that?
Yes, the easement is over the Murdesdorfs property.
It is over their property.
Where does it go right now?
Pardon me?
Is the driveway where the red line is now?
Yep, the driveway is right, right across here, yeah.
Okay.
Straight out.
And the engineer doesn't want it coming out on that curb, right?
Well, he does not, he's okay with it in this scenario where it would only be two lots here, and potential for one more on Murdesdorfs. Although their house is in the center, so it may not happen. It could happen, though. So we're only looking at four parcels here if we do a cul-de-sac arrangement, because Ms. Troy has access right onto Gypsy Valley. So in that sense, there's a lot less traffic here for, you know, going by the Murdesdorfs if we, if we cul-de-sack it, or just do the easement. And then this would be a heavier-traveled street with more lots on it, or, you know, larger neighborhood type setting.
Mr. Chair? How much land is actually usable? I mean, because based on the wetland delineations, it looks like the land falls off like right after the, the pole barn. So we get into this same scenario we talked about last time. It's a 20-acre lot, but the only buildable land, is it five acres of buildable land that's total? Or is it, so you're going to have two homes that are within five acres? Is that correct? Or what is that approximate land from?
I don't know. Do you know the acreage? I don't. But you're, you know, it, it is, the upland does stop right just south of this.
And it's low?
Pole barn.
It's low in the northwest corner as well, right?
Yeah, here's the wetland delineation. So there's a small wetland here and here, and then this, this is where the large, all of this is unusable.
All of that is unusable land?
Right.
And that pole barn is how big?
This is about 7,000 square feet.
So it's 70 by 100-ish?
Approximately, yep.
74, 60 plus the lean-to. And the width of that lot is?
600.
So we're?
So I'd say he's got, what, three acres, maybe?
300 by 300, best case, of usable land on each lot? If we split it?
You've got, yeah, a little over 300 by, yeah, I'd say 350-ish.
You can't, I mean, you can't say that's uncommon. My lot's exactly the same, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of lots out there that have less upland than that, you know. And then if he does dedicate the 66 feet, or if you require it, you know, his house is definitely going to be right in here on this lot in fairly close proximity to the pole barn.
Yeah.
And the other one, you know, is right over here, yep.
Mr. Udi, which side were you going to build on first?
As we're looking here, it would be to the left, right, almost into the tree line.
Right, right here?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, the last time we talked about this, we asked from a fire standpoint, have they been out and looked at this road? And it's 33 feet, and wasn't that one of the reasons we went to a little larger white lot? Just for fire and emergency vehicles and correct access? Is that from accessibility? Does this thing meet your requirements? It's not in rage, or what was the assessment?
The fire chief hasn't looked at this, but that is a requirement, that he does provide a backup area, turnaround area. So if you were, if you were not to require a cul-de-sac to be built, for instance, and you just wanted to allow the easement driveway that's there, then he would have to construct somewhere in between the two lots, most likely an area for a large vehicle turnaround.
Well, what are we going to do?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Moore?
I don't know. I mean, as far as the conversation, maybe to start out, while I can sympathize with wanting not a lot of houses, at some point, the area certainly can be a lot of houses. But I don't think that, I don't think that's mine. I don't think that splitting 20 acres into two 10-acre areas is, I mean, I think it's unrealistic. I think that if the houses are in the general area that he's stating, there's still a decent amount of space between those. And there could have easily been a road that was going to go right along that area. And then this would, wouldn't even be a conversation. So again, while I sympathize with people wanting areas to stay country, completely country, I don't think what he's asking for is that different in many areas of the city. So I don't, I don't know how anyone else feels, but.
Anybody else have any suggestions or ideas?
Chair? I would actually just like to comment on, yes, there are practical difficulties on the easement side of everything, accessing an actual road through another person's actual property. If we had to make a decision on one way or the other, I'm more in favor to lean towards a cul-de-sac versus a through-street. That corner is treacherous. I know. So it would be wise on the future development for the streets for us to look at a location for an intersection not on that corner. That corner is not ideal. So to have two houses down there, yeah, is not the end of the world. As far as what to do with that, is it going to be a street? Is it going to be a shared driveway? I don't know. I think shared driveways can be kind of a nuisance for the standpoint of just selling and/or getting along with your neighbors sometimes if it's not family, and even if it is family. So I don't know where to lean on that. And it being, being we have to cross another person's access, I'm not sure what we should be asking for yet.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Liz, does a cul-de-sac necessarily mean, and I should know this, but does a cul-de-sac necessarily mean that it's blacktopped and completely done? Like?
It wouldn't have to be, no. I mean, typically, it's nine-ton standards. But yeah, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to rip up what he's got and put a part of a cul-de-sac in, you know, I guess.
But I thought you said we couldn't put a cul-de-sac in, because you don't own out of the road?
But 66 across his parcel.
Oh, and they put cul-de-sac in on his then?
Yeah. He could either just dedicate the right away, or you could require him to build it, outbuild it. I had a question for the Murdesdorfs. I mean, knowing that this street, if it were, let's, let's just presume that Mr. Udi builds the cul-de-sac out to Gypsy Valley, knowing that you could benefit from it someday in splitting, does that make it any more appealing to you? Okay. Okay, just had to ask.
Yes.
In my other order, can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, thank you. First of all, the 33 feet, we had a, as to what you're talking about as far as the joint driveway, it'd be a joint driveway access. That would be something that would be filed with, at the county on both of the deeds, and it lives forever. So whoever would buy the land, if for some reason one of my sons would sell it in 30 years, 50 years, 100 years, whatever it may be, that's a, that's a matter of record on the county deed. And we would do that. I've done it before, joint driveway accesses, they do work. And yes, sometimes there can be issues with them as far as the two neighbors, but I don't see that, I don't see that as an issue at all. Also, the 33 feet, I have my real estate attorney, because the city attorney had asked about, we wanted to verify that in fact there was a variance on that piece before the city council acted on it. And what they found is that when the Murdesdorfs bought their property from their previous owner, it was actually everything but the north 33 feet. So there's a question as to actually who owns it. My guess would be is that the city, when they went through the original subdivision back X years ago, asked for that 33 feet. So it's, it's, it's somewhat in limbo as to who actually owns it. If it went, as I've been told, if it went to a court of law, it probably would go back to the Murdesdorfs, because it is in their, in their particular piece. But as far as access, we definitely have legal access to it. I think the city attorney, seeing the document from Mr. Gordon Jensen, and he agreed 100% that we do have access, so that's no longer an issue with, with your, with your city attorney. But as far as, as far as the joint driveway, on that 33 feet, that really is going to be just a temporary thing, because eventually the city is going to either run Gypsy Valley straight through, or there's something that's going to happen there. So it's not, it's not, we're not looking for a permanent use of that. It's probably more temporary. It could be five years, it could be 20 years. Don't, don't really know it this time. But that 33 feet, that's, that's the choke point that we have. We have 66, which we're willing to give to the city if you decide to come from the east or come from west. But other than that, the 33 feet seems to be where the, where the issue lies.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
So if we were to ask for the 66 feet, we wouldn't necessarily require anything go in that's just for future? Should it be needed?
You could just ask for right away, yes.
And then they would continue to use the driveway and/or share the current access?
Yeah, so what happens is the land is deeded to the city, but then the city in turn would allow them to use the driveway.
Any other comments here on planning and zoning? Questions?
If we did a cul-de-sac, Mr. Chair, where would the proposed cul-de-sac end up? Was it right where it hooks south?
Um, oh, this is.
Isn't his driveway?
Well, it would basically be. Well, it would basically be, oops, using the wrong pointer here. If he did a cul-de-sac, yeah, he had a bulb shown right about here, so...
And that's just so a driveway can access that versus if it were a corner?
Emergency vehicles, school bus?
Well, yeah, if you get 66 all the way across with a little extra for a bulb here in case it ends there, in case that's the terminus, like I said, it could always be vacated later.
And that would take care of the fire department, then?
Well, no, he would still need a paved area if you didn't require him to build that part of the cul-de-sac, which I guess doesn't make a lot of sense if it doesn't go out to the road. Although, you know, he would still have to provide an area for a large vehicle to back up and turn around.
Am I understanding you right? You say that's gotta be paved?
No, not necessarily, no.
Could be a nine-ton road.
Well, if we require him to pave a street, yeah, that's nine-ton standards. Yeah, if he just provided an area large enough for a fire truck, could potentially be gravel, unless you require it to be paved, which is an option, but could be either. And the dimension that we had talked to the fire chief about last time was like 12 by 35.
Even coming with trucks at my house.
Well, what do we wanna do here? I'll give my personal view. I don't like changing our ordinances from what they are. Personally, I think there should be 66 feet going back there for these two different parties who wants to build back there. But again, if we don't allow this, you say these other landlocked people would be facing the same problem, right?
Well, by acquiring it from Mr. Udi, you're not perpetuating the issue later if you want to do something with it, I guess, is my thinking. I mean, I guess I agree that a shared driveway may, you know, is typically viewed as a short-term or a temporary access, especially when you're asking for right-of-way. But there is no way to get 66 feet now, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Moe.
I mean, I think the 66 feet becomes a slight moot point, since he's actually offering it up. I mean, I don't think that we're, we would be putting him in a position that he's not saying he would be in. As far as the shared driveway goes, if that was the direction we went, if one house should be sold at a later date and a shared driveway is still there and the 66 feet is not being used yet, me as a home buyer, I would be understanding of that. Either I buy this house with a shared driveway, or I don't buy the house. In the situation they're in right now, it is family. Now, granted, again, we don't make a decision based on who, but they're also agreeing that they would or would not share a driveway at this time, so I don't know. I mean, the feeling part of it has to kind of come out of it. It's what's actually allowable and for what reasons.
Mr. Chair, I think the issue is too, is like, so that he's offering up the 66 feet, which is great. The problem is, it's 33 feet across somebody else's land that we're perpetuating that, right? And that's the gap. You're adding more bird to somebody else's easement that they may or may not want. But I also agree that two homes on 20 acres, if there's, if we don't like a split driveway to put in a provision for a cul-de-sac and have that be part of the change, then at least the city has a way to get in there to, for garbage trucks, for a fire truck, for a school bus, at some point, when somebody decides to sell it or whatever, then you can get in there and get turned around. If it's a 33-foot driveway that's there today, and you split off that, it's gonna be difficult to get in there. So if we propose a 66-foot easement, so that we have future growth there, and we require cul-de-sac, then we can put in, we can put in two separate driveways that feed into that cul-de-sac, and we get out of that split driveway scenario with these two lots.
Think that makes sense?
And there's not a lot that he can do about the choke point off his land for the 33 feet, but at least you've solved the problem of, once you get to that property, it's a 66-foot right-of-way, it's got a cul-de-sac, there's two driveways feeding to the cul-de-sac, and there's opportunity for fire, health, rescue, whatever, getting into that area. And then if future state somebody else sells, then you have the opportunity to remove that 33 foot there and get a 66-foot right-of-way.
Is that worth something? I like everything Jason just said.
Okay, the question is, what are we gonna do here? We need a motion, either the...
So my motion would be to have Mr. Udi submit the variance for the 66 foot. Liz, you can make that technical for me. Request a correct-sized cul-de-sac put in, and then have a separate driveway feeding into the cul-de-sac for each lot. And move forward with the lot split.
I would second that.
Okay, Commissioner Aldrich made a motion, and Commissioner Moe seconded. Did we have any further discussion? CNN will call for a vote, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Aye. Okay, you'll have to go to the city council meeting for Tuesday of the month.
So, Mr. Chair, what's the next step now? Because this is not, what, was it a proposal, right?
Right, so between now and the city council, I would work with Mr. Udi to develop a plan on paper for what you said, and to show that driveway plan, to show how the fire trucks can turn around, and to show the configuration of that.
I guess I didn't put it in my motion, but if gravel is fine, I would not request, I don't think we need to have it be an asphalt road or something.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open a second, second public hearing here. And this is a request by Jim Klemmer for property owned at 1-832-183rd Avenue Northwest, PD is 36-33-25-41-002, regarding the following matter. A variance allows deviation from a required setback to a 40 by 60 accessibility currently under construction. Okay? Lanis Stockman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Klemmer, I met with Mr. Klemmer last fall. Mr. Klemmer's down in the very southeast portion of the city, near Rogers Lake. He's got an unusual lot configuration, a substandard lot by our current standards. His house is legally non-conforming. It is closer to the side lot line and closer to the front lot line than is required now. Mr. Klemmer contacted me last fall about wanting to build a pole barn, and we met and talked about the setbacks. And, oh, this is hard to see, so I'm sorry. This was the original plan we drew up together. We, he was indicating where the home was. He had explained that there would be a new septic system installed in this vicinity. We showed that on the plan. And the setback line is drawn in along here. And this was the proposed location of the building. He's got one driveway access that comes out onto 183rd, here for the home. And then there's a second one here where there's a culvert, where he wanted to drive in and access this potential building. He's got a temporary structure or two in this vicinity, which he plans to remove. So then, early this year, it was brought to our attention that this was possibly in the wrong location. And when I pulled up the area photo, this was actually taken late last fall after they had dug the post holes for the pole barn. So you can see, what happened was, this whole area in here is the new septic mound. You know, he and I had, we had drawn it this way. It was back into these trees. He had to remove a lot of trees to even make it happen. When we sat down, it was explained that the septic would be in this area. Well, anyway, they needed, it was much larger than he had anticipated. So when they went to place the building, they knew they had to move it over, but they rotated it to the current configuration. You can see here, it was on sort of a, you know, northeast, southwest orientation, and here it's turned almost 90 degrees. So, I mean, generally speaking, you know, I tried to talk Mr. Klemmer out of applying for a variance, because it's not a situation where, that we like to promote, you know, and legalize errors, basically, in placement of buildings or any other variance from city regulations. We had the discussion that, you know, I cannot support this request in the location that it's sitting. You know, they measured a point right on this map, I apologize, it's hard to see, there's a measurement that indicates the 120-foot setback from the center line of the road to this closest corner of the building. And this corner is not too far from it, and they measured that, but just got rotated in such a way that it gets skewed a lot. So this variance is a 50.8-foot variance request. It sticks out 50.8 feet farther than it should have. So the question again, when we're dealing with variances, is to look at those practical difficulties and consider, you know, is this unique to the land? Is this a circumstance that was not created by the landowner? What is the influence of this building upon the neighborhood? And in looking at the neighborhood in general, I did look at the more regional view here in some of the neighboring pole barn or accessory building setbacks. It is an older neighborhood, so these two that are fairly close to him also do not comply with our current setbacks. But here's a better view of what the allowable buildable area is within the red line, and where the building actually sits. So here in the rectangle is the septic system, and you can see how the house is legally non-conforming. So, you know, again, is this reasonable? What effects does this have upon the neighborhood? A lot of times, a question we ask in variances is, is this the minimum action required to eliminate this practical difficulty? No, I mean, this is a huge, huge distance that this is off, I guess. So again, our office cannot support this under the variance rules. You as a commission need to talk about it, and of course, Mr. Klemmer will have the opportunity to comment, to see what solution you find in this scenario. Just another note, we have our building official here, if there happens to be any questions for him. Thank you.
Okay, is Mr. Klemmer here? Would you like to make some comments?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a really quick question? What's the status of the building? Is the whole thing built?
It's framed but not sited, is what it says.
Yeah, it's framed but not sited.
Cement floor or anything? You could try it and see if it works.
Just touch it with your finger.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, my name is James Klemmer, Mr. Chairman. I made the mistake. I'm totally at fault with this. When we seen that we were gonna be two, we had to be 10 feet away from the bottom of that mound. So when we marked the, you know, I took stakes and staked it out, I didn't, I guess that's my fault too, is I didn't realize that the cul-de-sac road was considered a road also, because it's not a through street. It's just, it dead-ends. And as you can see, Bo, my neighbor to the northwest of me, his pole sheds right off the end of that cul-de-sac. His house is right over here to where it says 20, and his deck is right about there. So I didn't want to turn the building where me and Liz originally had it marked, because it would have been right off their deck. I mean, it would have been, they require a 20-foot setback from the property line. So I'm not even sure if I would have been able to even put it right there. I would have had to re-measure it. What we and Liz originally drew the plan up on was an aerial view from 2014. The second aerial view was from 2017. It had to be either the day of that they drilled the footings, or the day after. So they hadn't, you know, when she brought that to my attention, I was like, oh my gosh. You know, I major league messed up. You know, because if I would have had that information prior, because we didn't do a survey, I have done that since, and I'm not even sure if I could have built that size of pole shed. I mean, the guys worked all winter on it. It's all framed. I mean, we didn't even realize that there was a, we knew the power line ran underneath it, but I contacted Conexus Energy by Liz. She gave me that information, the people to contact. So I'm gonna have to pay to have that power line moved also, that runs from the transformer on the cul-de-sac around, or wherever they can get access without having to be inside my pole shed. And we were aware of the power line, but they were really careful. We had it marked, and then when they put the septic in, they, we marked it for them too. So everything, and Andy can, he inspected the mound and everything. And I called Andy out. This is what kind of brought it all to my attention, because I'm in the, I pulled a permit to do my house, and we finished, he wanted to do both, inspect both at the same time, because it saves him time and money. And so I invited Andy out to inspect my basement, and I thought, well, I'll kill two birds with one stone. Inspect the framing, because it's all framed, it just needs steel. When Andy caught, the setback was off, and then Liz came. the next day with the aerial view and now the baby's born, pretty much. So I'm stuck with tearing it down or getting the variance. So I'm not trying to hide nothing. I, it is my mistake. I told Andy that and I told Liz that. I messed this up. I, you know, I didn't do it purposely. My neighbors, Jerry here and Beau and Tiffany that are to the north, they're the only ones that it really would affect because they're, they only can see it. There's a group of trees in a swamp kind of low spot on that corner. If you can, you can see it kind of. And then it's the cul-de-sac, city-owned property on the other side with a swamp. So the only really neighbor I have that is affected by it would be Jerry if he came down the street or anybody driving down the street. And they go by so fast, our dog, one of our dogs I run over. And they don't even know it's there, you know. Unless they go into the cul-de-sac and turn around. It's a huge cul-de-sac. In fact, Beau was complaining that they don't plow all the way to the end of his driveway. They kind of do a swoop around and then he's gotta do out to the part of the street on the cul-de-sac. But it's totally my fault. I'm not trying to hide anything from the council or the city planner or Andy. I, you know, like I said, I invited him out to do the inspection 'cause I thought everything was ready to be inspected. And then when he brought it to my attention, I, you know, I, the guys worked all winter long. I mean, they were up there and it was freezing cold, snowing to get the framing done. And then when they, I told them, stop until I can talk to the, you know, everybody that I need to talk to 'cause Liz, you know, Andy brought it to Liz's attention, Liz brought it to my attention. And then it's been on hold since. I got the, I got all the material. I'll just have to tear it down and sell it 'cause I won't have the property. 'Cause I don't think I can twist it where me and Liz originally drew it up because it will be too close to the, well, no, I don't think I can. I don't think I can actually turn it north and south because I won't be within that twenty feet from their property line. I gotta be twenty feet away. And there will be no turnaround where a bigger vehicle could turn around on that end. If there was a fire, I don't think you can get a vehicle in there to turn around. So I would just basically have to scrap it and just try to salvage what I can. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time, you know, your time.
Thank you. Now, I asked the clerk at this time to verify the legal publications and mailings and posting have been completed?
Yes.
Okay. And now at this time, she has a letter to read here. Public comments.
To the Now Then City Council, Mr. James Clemmer had personally requested our presence this evening to discuss this variance with the city of Now Then to voice any concerns about the location of his pole barn. We, the residents at one eight-four, one-ten Salish Circle Northwest, who have an adjoining property line with Mr. James Clemmer, have no issues or concerns when it comes to his pole barn location and/or distance from the cul-de-sac or to the road. We request that the Now Then City Council note this and contact us with any further questions or concerns as we are unable to be there this evening. Beau and Tiffany Eschbach.
Okay, we're gonna open up four items. Is there anybody on the, out here in the audience that wants to make comments again at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mrs. Clemmer would like to say something.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I missed a wave and I just know it's a lot of work with the guys done. And we have two boats basically wanting to store in there. And right now we have some, what do we call it?
Port of shelter.
Yeah, kind of port shelters.
Shelter lodges.
And, you know, those are our i-star, you know, just like a tent. And if we keep our boats in there now. So I'm thinking that, you know, the pole barn is much better for all our stuff. We also have snowblowers and, you know, typical lawnmower, stuff like that. But I just think, you know, that would do a lot better than those tents.
And if I could say something too, we had somebody try to break into one of my port, it was just zip closed. And they, I have a trail cam. And the guys, when they were working on the pole shed, were watching me back from that location. And the kid ran out of the street. He had a car parked in the street. And I had to have the sheriff come out and look at my, uh, trail cam video. And it clearly shows him down by my two shelters, portable shelters. He was gonna steal some of my books. So that's all I wanna use it for, storage for my boats. They addressed, you know, they got the license plate on there. And it probably has a, it's on public address. Came out and talked to me and talked to that person. So it's basically, it's not a bad area. Really rarely have anything, but there was, one of the neighbors, Devin, David, Dave and Deb Anderson, who follow up on a lot of the neighborhood and stuff. They always report on us. They send us an email each time, at least or third of Now Then and the area. I'm sure it was probably on that report that we had attempted to break in at the apartment. That's all I want to say, to give safety stories.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wants? Just give your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Fallon and I live by the cross, one-hundred-and-eighty-third. From these two folks. And I have no opposition at all as to where the building is placed, how it looks coming down the road or going by it. So as far as I'm concerned, it's just, it's just fine at that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a comment from the floor? Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission here. If the commission got any comments here. All I can say is I really can understand with the problem you got there and the expense you went into and so forth, but it, uh, there's no question about it. It wasn't following our ordinance. The way I understand it, our staff did work with you to set up the right place to put it. Are there any comments from rest of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Aldous.
Looking at the layout and where the red dots are and where the, that would meet all of that, if we, if you put it inside the red box, I'm assuming you can't get access to it 'cause the drain field is in the way, correct? And there's a mound system that would block the access to the front of the building, correct?
Yeah, if he were to eliminate the second access he has on one-eighty-third or one-eighty-four, he could instead access off of Salish Circle because really the only place to put it is, um, you know, sort of in a...
Right, it has to go there. And then I'm assuming it needs to have a...
Chair.
You through?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Pearl.
My question to the owner is, it looks to be like they've eliminated the second drive on one-hundred-and-eighty-fourth and it looks like they are trying to use a new drive at Salish. Now, I was gonna ask if that is actually being done.
It can be, yes. Yeah, I mean, either one is fine. I have, the only reason, see the two little shelters? You can see them on that illustration?
Right here.
Those are right where the old driver was. And the only reason they even came across on Salma Circle was to bring materials when they, when they did my septic system. So they had to get access to my septic system. My septic system is way over next to the house, but that's the only access with the big trucks and their excavator and everything without going across, wrecking my whole front yard that I just, you know, I have over seating and everything. In fact, I gotta do all that. And I've got two dogs and I got sodden because they're tracking so much mud in now from this black curtain seat. It's ridiculous. But, yeah, they actually flattened out, that was an old motorcycle. Like, uh, my son used to race, my stepson, this is my secondary, but he used to race his Blaster around. He had a track out there with the, where you go out on the curb and it's like a berm. And so they had to flatten all that out to get back in there with the big back holes in the dirt and all the stuff for the mound and the tanks. And so they, they created that, you know, access, but we're only allowed two. So I, either one is fine. I mean, I'm, I'm open to either one, whichever works the best. The Salma Circle has, if you give me the variance, will be more practical because there's more room. And that's, it was really nice for them to bring the materials in for the pole shed 'cause they could park, they have a, I've never really seen them before, but they have a, like, semi that disconnects and it picks up, it's a forklift. It picks it up and brings the materials in. So I, like I said, I have no idea when they deliver them. I've probably seen it. But it made it really nice for them to unload them on the, off the cul-de-sac. And there's like, how many feet is it, uh, Liz, on that corner, on that one southeast straight, down about right there?
Here, oh, thirty-five point two, I think.
Yeah, so there's a lot of room on that end compared to the mound that's pretty close on this end. It would just be able to, we come through that Salma Circle and be able to turn around, go back out, it's real easy. Hundred-and-eighty, well, actually, our address is weird because we've got a five-digit address and Jerry's to the south of us on Rogers Lake. It's actually a four-digit address. Because we're on an east-west street and it's supposed to be four. I don't know whether they, our house is so close to the other property line. We don't know what happened there. I mean, the house was built in nineteen seventy-four. So that's why all of it's not to code or whatever it took to be some order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, are you through?
Yeah.
Fire Doctor.
Mr. Clemmer, did you have to remove a lot of trees to place it where it is?
Oh, a lot of trees. Uh, that hole where my septic was and all the way to that, right where that red circle goes through, everywhere in there was all trees.
Okay, I know, so all this was trees?
Nope, just right to the line. All there, all the way over, almost to, just beyond there, right about, a little bit down further. Uh, over, up, 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 right about there. That's where the trees are left now. That's all trees I'd have to take down if I turn that one over. So I'd, basically, that hole would wipe out all the trees along there. I got a little path that goes over to Beau and Tiffany's right there that I drive with my lawn tractor. And, uh, that would all have to be leveled and kept down and re-built up because it's low.
It's low too?
Yeah. It gets wet and it deters, we have wet season.
Mr. Jurgensen.
Commissioner Pearl. The way it looks to me, that could be turned away. It's gonna cost money, but you could come within the code if you twist it.
It could certainly be turned.
I think you could fit it here, yeah, sort of north-south. Um, but the access may not be the best from the...
I think, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What you're saying though is give the building a quarter turn and move it east.
Yeah, yeah, give it a twist.
Up here, yeah.
Well, the only concern I have with that, Mr. Chair, is that if there was a fire, there wouldn't be, I don't think they could get a fire truck between Bowles and my house. It's it.
You don't have a big enough lot to be a problem with a fire truck.
Doesn't the truck stand the role then?
Okay.
No, there would be no problem.
I didn't know if they had to get to the back of that pole barn. There's a, you know, 'cause there's, we don't have any hydrants or nothing.
Oh, sure. I believe your acreage is one-point-four acres, one-point-three, four acres, something like that?
Uh, one-point-six-eight, ain't it?
One-point-six?
Yeah, this is, oh, one-point-three-nine, it says.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so your lot isn't extremely concerning for the fire trucks. They've got hoses and...
We got more discussion here in the hearing zone. Now, we'll go back and ask the public if there's anybody else out there having comments? Okay, being there's no comments, we'll close the public hearing. Now we'll act upon it. Well, I'll be brave and make a motion to deny it. Does somebody like to second?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna second it.
Okay, Mr. Schiller seconded. Do we have a discussion on this?
It's a tough Tuesday.
Okay, then there's no discussion.
I...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I guess from, uh, understand the variance, I also understand that if there, if we look at the other properties in the area, they all have the same, would all need to reapply for the same variance if they're being built today 'cause there's other properties that don't meet the same code. And I realize we're trying to update the code. I also look at if you enforce the code and have him move the building, he's gonna have to wipe out the majority of the trees on his lot and raise the property up to build the building. So he may choose to not do that. And then all of the stuff that's supposed to go in the building will not be in the building. So then we're looking at, would the residents of the city really, do they wanna look at two or three boats and some snowblowers and motorcycles and lawnmowers parked outside and in temporary shacks? Or do we want a building that none of the neighbors seem to care about? That doesn't meet the code? 'Cause it's gonna wipe out the majority of his trees if you look at this topographical map. So I guess that's where I'm struggling a little bit.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pearl.
Um, and to flip side on that then, I do hear what you're saying. What about the, we have setbacks and we have the reasons to try to keep things more conformed? And then now we've got someone that's oopsed and asking for a variance. What's gonna stop anyone else from oopsing and waiting for a variance as well?
Chair, I guess I, I would completely agree with her. I also think that you can take a lot of things into consideration. A, being the area it's in. I mean, just let's say that at some point we were to agree and say, listen, there was a mistake made, you know. How do you, I have five-year-old twins, like, how do I punish them for each of the things they do wrong without completely, you know, overreacting? Now, I'm not saying that making him move it would be an overreaction. What I'm saying is I can agree with Jason in that the area conforms to what he did. Did he do it per code? No, that's clear. Would there be larger implications than just moving the pole barn into the approved area? Yes. Do his neighbors seem to care? No. You know, I think there's, it's a really tough spot. Like, this is a really tough spot, not just for them, but for us. Going forward, just because someone else comes in and, you know, this isn't, just he got to do it, now I should get to do it. Well, are there other options besides just denying it? You know, can you, can you nicely make an example of someone without being a negative for everyone? You know, let's say it was built and you drove by, would you ever know it was there? Probably not. I don't, I don't know this area very well. I did not get a chance to go see it, which is why I didn't really know it was built. But I don't, I just feel like maybe without just throwing it under, that there's gotta be another option. My personal opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did have one thought. What if he sort of cut the northerly twenty feet off and made it a forty-by-forty? I did some measuring and that would actually get him about fifty feet from the right-of-way, plus another thirty-three. So he'd be eighty-three feet back instead of a hundred-and-twenty. It would end right about here. I mean, as a compromise. You know, had he come in first and said, well, I've got a lot of trees on my property. I'm asking for a variance so I don't tear down all these trees. You know, we may have given him one based on some of these environmental factors, but it wouldn't have been this extreme either. So it is a tough call.
I mean, if he cuts off that portion, even if you were to flip it around to the other side, you're still left with an entire area that has been cleared out for a pole barn. you're still left with an entire area that has been cleared out for a pole barn. Now, again, I, I hate to approve of bad behavior. I don't do it at my house. I don't tend to do it anywhere. But what, what do you do? I mean, it, I read in here, I thought I read that he intentionally did it a different way. Well, I mean, that could be debatable too. I don't think that there was intent. Nobody wants to come back here and have to go through this and put themselves up for re-queue it.
I would like to have a reason to approve this, definitely. It just, the problem is you're gonna set a precedence where people are gonna just go in for a permit. They start doing something, then they come back, oh, well, guess what, you know, um, I need to, I need the variance on it. And I, and I think you are really gonna run into that problem. It, we, we need a reason to make, make this work, why it's different than anybody else. It's, being it's already built. If he'd have came in here and wanted to build this like it is right now without it being built and have a variance, I guess I would have not a lot of problem with that, just from the way everything is set up. But I don't know, it's, I, it's a problem.
I guess I could say that I don't think that this is setting a precedent at all. I can see how people may try to use it to their advantage. I deal with building departments every single day. And you can call the same person three times in three days and they will never give you the same answer. So our job here is to take care of this case and obviously look at what would happen going forward. But should this, should this be okay? Doesn't mean that going forward, it always has to be okay. I would hate to see him have to not only move it, but also put all the trees back. You know, disrupt what he has done. If he were to have come to us today and said, this is what I wanna do, and we were to look at it and say, okay, yeah, look at all the trees, look at his access from one eighty-fourth and/or the circle that I don't know how to pronounce, and we were to approve it then. I mean, I'm saying.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
If they weren't tough, they wouldn't come to the commission.
Right.
Liz would just handle them all.
Right, my chickens are ready.
You're, you're always gonna get the tough ones. And I agree with, with Mr. Schiller because I've been on this commission long enough before we were a city. And the precedents do come back.
I'm not saying that they're not there.
They always come back and find, you did it here, and they come back and give it to you in writing where you did it before. And, and it is a, a rough situation because they were working with, with the city staff and decided to change it without incorporating the city staff. And hypothetically, I don't know that this commission would have approved that. You know, we don't know where the trees are, but probably would have suggested tucking it back since the drain filled anywhere it did, something different. And maybe there would be a slight deviation from the setback, but I think it would have been significantly different. The, the thing that I wanna encourage the, the commission on is we need to stick to the ordinances and, and the statutes as written. There's a document here from the league that is in your packet on the requirements and variance. Very specifically, it can't be of the homeowner's own doing. And, and this has been in the legal system in the state. Because for a number of years, we couldn't issue any variances. It was only after they lightened up and changed this law that's referenced here that we could even consider variances again. But throughout the state, they just stopped issuing variances until the, the court ruled on it. So it's important because as it says in that article, not only do you have to determine why you accept it or didn't accept it, but you have to put in writing to justify it. Because in land use cases, and this is what they'll tell you at the league training every time you meet there, the judges will always rule against the city if anything seems arbitrary or capricious. If it's your opinion as opposed to your stack, standing on your ordinances, your policies, established policies and your zoning regulations. If it's other than that, if it becomes your opinion, then it becomes arbitrary and cities always lose those cases.
How does it end up here then? And how did it even end up here then?
It, it really shouldn't have.
Oh.
And Liz said it probably won't go anywhere.
Okay.
If you wanna spend the money to do it. But, but, you know, our, our professionals said it shouldn't have ended up here. It shouldn't be a discussion because the criteria that you've got in writing through our ordinances, through state statute and through our zoning regulations don't allow. And, and it, it tugs at the hard surface. That's why these land use issues are always hard. Like it's a case where a mistake was made and, and another one of the regulations on the variances, it can't be a monetary decision. That's a hard thing, that's a hard thing to do.
So if you were to deny this, and I, and I'm just using myself because I can't speak for anyone else. And I were to say that I don't agree with denying it, then really I'm going against the law.
Well.
I wanna make sure.
You, you have a, a denial, um, finding before you. And you take a look at the readings for denial, one, two, three, and four, pretty much states the case. And so you can, you can certainly still say I, I'm still not for it. I still feel for this property, and we all do. But unfortunately, it will set precedent. And somebody else comes back and says, I got the same situation and very like it. And you denied me for whatever reason, that will be, that would be a problem. And, and we had it, and we had some discussions on some property in our commercial district. And I remember the same discussion in the planning and zoning, this is gonna be a precedent. And they said, eh. And as soon as we got new development over here, they tried to let six-year-old decision out and said, there's your precedent. You can't deny us. And we didn't. And changed, changed our commercial property significantly. So it is something that it's hard because every time you wanna do something good for good people, you have to think there's forty-five hundred residents here right now and there'll be more. And these issues will come up more.
I don't disagree with that whatsoever. And I, I completely understand that, you know, doing something for somebody means other people think that it will be done for them. But that doesn't, doesn't have to be. Now, that doesn't mean that it should or should not be approved. I'm just, I'm just stating that, you know, I don't know.
You would, you would think it doesn't have to be, but like I said, people and the land use issues, she generally will find that. And, and then you'll have to say, and that's why in the league document, it says very clearly, should a city create a record, a city should create a record supporting its variance decisions? And denying or approving, you gotta put it right. That's what's gonna be hauled into court when the land use case goes into court. They'll come back and say, on what basis? And that's why in this case, the findings that Liz had here clearly documents if this were ever to go to court. So here's the four things that meet the state mandated criteria.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I'd like to say something, just if it's okay, Jim.
Sure.
When that aerial view was taken, if you look at the dates on the bottom of both the aerial views, they both are two thousand fourteen. My septic system wasn't put in till two thousand seventeen. An inspector came out the day after to inspect the footings. Liz brought this aerial view to me after months after she got it because she didn't realize it was from two thousand fourteen when we drew up the original plan. Andy's guy, I caved the paperwork. He denied it at first, our footings holes, because we hadn't, he was two hours early. And we hadn't cleaned them or set the footings yet. And then we had him out again and he passed the footings where they were. And it, that's, that's the aerial view if she goes back to where the holes are drilled. So I, I didn't, I assumed everything was right because an inspector had inspected the footings. And, and Andy came out and he said, that's not his sandbox. But if, if I would have had the knowledge that that aerial view that was taken was just, it had to be the day of or the day after we, they drove the, I would have been able to at, at a minimal cost, shift that whole thing the way we had it drawed up on the, on the aerial view from two thousand fourteen. And even the new aerial view from two thousand seventeen says two thousand fourteen. So they're not even, this, I don't know who does the aerial views, but they, they don't change the dates on them. Their, their paperwork is wrong. I can bring this to court and the judge is gonna throw this up. Because I'm not gonna go on a dated aerial view that's two thousand seventeenth, that's dated two thousand fourteen. That's a legal issue too. Now, I can get an attorney and I can push this to the end and fight you. But I don't wanna do that. I'm here to plead my case. It was, it was, I, I'm saying it's my fault, but I didn't have all my information. If I would have definitely moved that building when we knew the footings were, because how, how, how hard is it to pull the footings up, cover the holes, and then reposition it? Not at all, and not at cost. I have workers that, he's a landscaper, never built a pole shed before, working all winter long, trying to get it done. I, you know, they're freezing cold. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to pull nothing, I'm not trying to blame anyone. I pulled them, yeah, it is my fault, but I didn't have that aerial view until April or, yeah, it was April. And Andy's, when he caught it, he came out to do the basement inspection. I asked him to check the pole shed. I had not approved. It was that far off. And then when I, when Liz came out that next day, or later that day, she brought me that aerial view and I went, oh my God. I didn't realize that I was that far, cause I had just thought I twisted enough to keep it so that the neighbors wouldn't have to look, I took, to please everybody involved. So that's all I have to say. I don't wanna fight. I don't wanna, I don't wanna go against the law. I know there's reasons and people are always gonna come and say, hey, you know, these are unique servants. So really, really unique service dancers, because the aerial views, they even got the right dates on them. So I'm not, it's not financial, it's not against the, you know, I just don't wanna have to tear more trees down and incur the cost of tearing it down. Cause well, I'm just gonna tear it down and I'm gonna put up portable shelters for everything. Cause that's, that's the only thing I can do. I don't, I want my stuff safe, but I'll put up some more trail cams and I've got a security system that I can look on my cameras all the time. And I'll, you know, that's all I want, so thank you.
Yes, Hunter Stockman.
Uh, two comments. One regarding this aerial photo. So the situation is the county took the aerial photo in November after he had done this. They did not get it online till February. And I called them about March on the date of it and told them that their date was wrong. Obviously knowing that this building had just gone in and a couple other sites I looked at, you know, piqued my interest as well. So, you know, at the time he drilled those holes, just didn't exist. This wasn't, uh, released to the public yet. And just a comment regarding the portable shelters, they are considered temporary and they're only allowed for six months out of the year. So, um, you're, yeah, welcome to use them six months out of the year.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of this motion, now the motion is to deny it. All in favor of the motion to deny it, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried? We're, we're sorry, I, I understand your.
I, I'll be seeing an attorney.
So, come, come to this workshop city council. I imagine we'll be discussing once, Mayor. Will it, will it be discussed or you?
Recommendations from the commission are discussed at the city workshop, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So again, motion by Ames, second by Schiller, correct?
Right. Okay, we'll open the next public hearing. This public hearing is for Paul Line Decker for a property owned at one eight-six-three-zero St. Francis Boulevard, pin number three-five-dish thirty-three-dish twenty-five-dish fourteen-dish zero-zero-eighteen regarding the following two matters. An interim use permit to allow continuation of an existing home extended business, which allows storage of personal work vehicles greater than twenty thousand pounds, G V W, and to allow outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment for others. In record, where are we going? Pronounce it. Revouch, H, revoke, A, of an existing condition use permit issued two thousand two for roofing business. Uh, and I asked our planner Stockman at this time, then.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for waiting so long. Come on up. This is Mr. Line Decker. Uh, he's sole owner of the property. And, um, again, he's requesting an interim use permit to run a home business and revoke an existing seat he issued for a roofing business that is no longer operating. So he lives on St. Francis Boulevard, kinda down on this real dangerous curb here. And this is the, what was used as a site plan, the aerial photo. So he indicated all the neighbors and the adjacent accessory buildings and everything. And the area in question is regarding the storage operation that he is currently running. So the way he describes it is as the roofing business kinda went out, the storage kinda came in. And as I explained in the report, this was a fenced area for an ostrich farm that was run by the previous owner. And, uh, so his request is to maintain this area. He does have some wood chip piles and logs and brush along this north side here. Um, but generally speaking, there's been, um, no complaints by the neighbors. I did get one call, um, from one gal that lives on Krypton. And I'll just go ahead and read this email. Uh, I'm writing you in regarding a conditional use permit being considered, it's actually an interim use permit, for a small storage business at one eight-six-three-o St. Francis Boulevard. We have several home businesses located nearby us that have little respect for their neighbors or community. But I believe Paul Line Decker is one of the more responsible home business owners in our area. I would be supportive of his continued business only if I could be assured it would remain completely behind his fenced area and it was used for storage of operable, operable equipment and not a salvage yard. Thank you. So, um, in working through this, um, I had tried to create conditions that are good to include, in other words, hours of operation and some real specifics. I did indicate to Mr. Line Decker that we would kinda work through these and, um, so that everybody is comfortable with the conditions. But my recommendation, um, would be to approve this provided it doesn't grow any larger than the current configuration. And, um, I'll let you address some of the other items, like the parking of his work truck on the south side of the building and some of the other things that aren't screened. But generally speaking, it's, um, not unlike several home businesses that we have here. And the consideration should be again, you know, the impact on neighbors, um, the view from the public roadway and any comments that we receive. So thank you.
At this time, would you like to make any comments, Mr. Line Decker?
Yeah, I'm really not looking to expand the business at all, just basically keep it the way it is. I had the previous conditional use permit to run my roofing business. I have trucks coming and going all the time. Now I just have people coming and storing things. There's far less traffic coming and going. Setback from the neighbors quite a bit. I haven't had any complaints over the last ten years. I really didn't think that I needed to change it because I thought it was pretty much close to within, you know, the parameters of my previous conditional use permit, although it's on, running the same business, there's less traffic coming and going and, you know, it's just some things that are being stored up there. I did go around and talk to some of the neighbors and got several of them to sign a statement here. You don't have that. But I've six of them gave. I've six of them here from the neighbors to the north and the south. And I talked to the person, I think, that sent you the, sent you the email. And, uh, yeah, concerned, you know, there's some letter that went out that they were gonna be, that it was gonna expand the whole thing and turn it into a junkyard or something, you know, they just fear the unknown. I assured them I didn't have any intention of, uh, of growing it. I already had the fencing area from the conditional use permit. All the other stuff is gone. What am I gonna do with this space? You know, I think, put truckloads and truckloads of gravel down there, improve the surface, improve the fence. Do something with the, with the land that I own, I figure, rather than just leave it weeds out there. I typed up this letter. Um, says, "I own and reside on the property," I don't know if they're... Here's what they're saying. "I have no issues or complaints over the past ten, have had no issues or complaints over the past ten years about the small storage business run by Paul Line Decker on the above-mentioned property. I also have no concerns with this small storage business continuing to be operated as it has been over the last ten years." And I got signatures from, uh, on that from Ron and Gene Yolch to the north of me. That's at 1-8660 St. Francis Boulevard. Marcel Garrison at 1-8600 St. Francis Boulevard. Those are my immediate north and south neighbors on Highway 47. Bob Johnson, he's an immediate neighbor too, um, to the south and, uh, south and west of me at 1-8585 Piri. Sue Allen and Douglas Dickhausen. They're not immediately next to me with, uh, with Wills. And, uh, Roger Purth, he's a lot away from me to the north. And another one. Nora Mader, he's not even at Wills, but he got a letter in a... I can't remember. Oh, Petersons, they're the ones that said that he had a concern about, and he brought the concern to them, that, you know, this is gonna expand and be a, you know, the eyesore. So I went and talked to him. Reassured him that I didn't have any intentions on, you know, on growing the business any, anymore. It's just a little side income to use the space that I already have improved. So he was all fine with that. As a matter of fact, his, uh, son has been on the property, because he's got friends that store stuff there. It's mostly word of mouth, you know, people that are coming and then they know somebody else that, oh, yeah, yeah, I need a place to keep my camper, I need a place to keep my boat. So they talk to me and then, you know, they move in. Apparently, uh, works out pretty good for him because it's pretty much full now. I don't know if you wanna give any of the proposed conditions or concerns or anything.
We'll get to that later. Is there anybody on the floor who wants to make any comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll come back to us. Guy, here, do we have any further discuss, questions to ask him? Line Decker. She did mention something about, uh, you store a truck outside?
I have a truck. Yeah, I drive a truck. That's what I do all the time. This is just sometimes. Um, I drive a truck for, I'm an owner operator, so I own my own truck. And I drive for private career. And it's a straight truck, probably a 26-foot strip truck, dock truck for a box truck. And I park that close to the house. It's like the vehicle that I drive to work every day. Park the next, that's what I park next to my, than my personal storage building, the bigger building.
Did you have a concern about that?
No, I'm just pointing it out that, that, that could be part of your interim use permit, that you specify, you know, one vehicle outside of there if that's what you choose. But that's what he has and that's where he parks it.
I do have a dump truck also that I haul wood. I burn wood for heat. I've got an outdoor wood boiler. And, uh, so I have a sign out front, and you recognize the sign out front that says wood chips wanted. So then tree companies come in sometimes and, and dump a little wood chips out there that I use for landscaping. When it comes along with the wood chips is free wood that I convert into heat on the front.
Now, you do have a six-foot fence around all that stuff you guys stored.
I do, yeah. That was kind of a previous condition of my, a previous conditional use permit that I had to screen that. Well, it was kind of a rickety crooked fence and it really, I don't like that screening, the little slats that go through. I think it looks kinda crappy, so I, I put a more of a privacy fence, you know, use the same outline, but put, you know, wood picket, privacy fence on three sides. And now I've got a steel, kind of a polearm fence that looks real nice on the, on the front side. So it's all screened, everything's in there, in and around, anything to the north, up to the north on there, that little building at the north end of the lot. There's some things stored around there too. But just north of that is pretty heavily wooded area, so it's not seen by anybody. That's the least seen part of the, of the property because it's kinda surrounded by the wooded area. I have some things outside that. Anything outside the fence is pretty much right up around that building. You would have stuff around, or any potential.
Anybody in the commission have any questions to ask? We'll open it up again to the floor items, if there's no floor items. We'll, we'll close the public hearing. Now, I have to bun it.
Did that equate being as far as the floor?
Yeah.
We were gonna talk about a couple of other things I thought that might come up.
Go ahead.
And I'll address those. Uh, I have cars parked on the lot and I noticed that there was a concern about cars parked on the lot and a recommendation that if you park on a hard surface, like a paved surface, any cars, that might be a license. I've got some people, you know, there's a collector car out there, like a Oldsmobile 442 and, uh, some other cars out there. I thought it might be a concern, um, as far as, or somebody brought it to my attention that it could be a concern as far as a potential leakage or anything like that dripping from a car, you know, that's just sitting there for, for a year or two. So I addressed that and I've, I've nailed heavy-duty tarp's down. I'm hoping that, that we can make an exception on the hard paved surface as long as I can show that I'm containing any oil that might drip. So I have heavy-duty tarp's that I crawled around there and nailed them down into the ground with, uh, seven-inch spikes. So they're not going anywhere. And then on top of the tarp, I put cardboard that can be easily changed out. If they become, you know, if it'd be evident that oil might've been dripping there, it'd be easily changed out a couple times a year to keep any oil, uh, from, you know, running out the edge of the tarp. So I've addressed that and I think, you know, I'd hate to, you know, call all those people and say, hey, you got a, move your car out of here, you know, they're your customers, they've been paying for, for years. They park stuff there and just kinda forget about it until sometime, but they keep thinking so. I'd like it to be okay that I can park cars there as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are you saying you have cars outside of the fenced area?
No, inside the fenced area.
Oh, okay, inside the fenced area, sorry.
Inside the fenced area, on the gravel, it's on an improved surface. But in addition to the improved surface, which is a plastified gravel, is the, the tarp's over the top of that just to, just to make sure that we don't have any groundwater issues or whatever the concern might be. So, that's a precaution that I take.
What are the, are these yours too?
Those are campers right in the back, field guy.
I'll tell you this.
Mm-hmm.
It's a real good friend of mine that, uh, has a camper park out there. He uses it to, I don't know, comes up and hangs around and it's kind of a personal use camper. It's nothing that I, that I charge for. It's just a, you know...
Are we made?
So he actually stays in it?
He doesn't sleep there. I, he probably has a concert twice, but it's not like he comes up and sleeps a weekend or anything like that.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll close the public, did I close the public hearing? I don't think I did.
You did when you reopened it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I won't reopen it.
Okay, okay. Now, we're, we're gonna have to look, look at some other things. We, the hours of operation before you would daylight to...
Down to dusk, I figured would be good. I mean, people come, they're coming from up north with their campers, you know, whenever they come, on Sunday night, drop the camper out, pick up the car.
Well, we've got recommended here hours, six AM to nine PM, and Saturday to Sunday, six AM to five PM.
Six AM to nine PM, sounds reasonable, but on Sunday night, um, you know, pick, kind of what time to come home from work, what time to come home to work.
Dinner time.
All times.
Early, early evening, but...
You gotta be there by five o'clock or...
So this isn't like seasonal storage. This is, they come up, get it, go for the weekend, come back, drop it off.
Yeah, I mean, not everybody. I mean, it just depends on when they have and who goes camping every weekend.
I mean, I'd have a hard time saying that's not a reasonable amount of traffic then, but it...
It's like...
My dad's built it in my front yard, so I can't really say anything.
Are you charging him for it?
Temporarily. Well, he lets me use his cabin for free.
There you go.
Just get chairs.
Nobody's had any issues with the traffic coming and going, and there's far less traffic coming and going than, than there was with my previous conditional use permit in the roofing business. There was trucks, you know, commercial trucks coming and going every day, you know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm definitely not arguing. I'm just saying it'd be hard, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, mayor.
Just, again, for the commission's consideration, it's gonna come before the council. You ought to make your recommendations the strongest they can be, one way or the other. But I'll, I don't know why it didn't come up, but you had two decisions on outdoor storage in a commercial area last fall. Which you were very diligent on licensing and mobility and, and paved surfaces and... So, just remember that because, again, those people are gonna come back. If you do something significantly different, they're gonna come back and want theirs.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask Hunter Stockman.
But before you get into hours of operation, you know, take a look at the pictures. Tires and things behind buildings, things that aren't behind the fence, there's some... Besides the tree and the bruck, you know, the first picture there next to the dump truck. You've got tires and debris there. You've got, on the, these four things. You've got things that look like not vehicles that are stored there.
Yeah, there are some non-vehicle storage. I've got some big tractor tires that we've been gonna have to make in the snowplows that connect to the front of the box.
This is outside, right?
Cause they make great snowplows, but I'm not gonna do it, so if you guys like sandboxes for the parking area or anything like that, you're certainly welcome to come.
Look training devices, you know, have you ever seen people having pushed them across the parking lot?
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, that's training device.
Hunter Stockman.
For, for athletes, they push them.
Oh, yeah, 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 we can do that too. Anything, including the tires would be great.
But we do live in now then, and people in now then do have stuff laying around in their yard. If they wanna have tires on the side of their building, that's their own personal stuff. It's no different than somebody having a bunch of pallets laying around.
Yeah. And I'm just saying that if they're in asking for conditional, or interim use permits, that's when those things...
But the interim use, but the interim use permit is going to be for the stuff of people storing other things there, not for his own personal stuff that he has around. He can have stuff.
Now, remember that, that there's a rental property on that as well.
Inside this fence.
No, that building there at the top with the stuff on the side of it is rental property.
But he's got that, the building rented, not the outside stuff. Now, if the person that is renting that building has a junk lane out there, that could be a problem. But if it's his own personal tires or some other stuff laying around, that's his.
And I'm just bringing it up for discussion. If you get one shot at your IUP and if you don't...
Well, now, you can, you can put certain stipulations in on there, you know, what you have. And if they would, would violate it, or if they would have, um, um, you know, complaints from neighbors and stuff like that, then you can have that thing brought back in and have those things changed in that IUP if you have stipulated in that.
That's my point for bringing it up. And if you don't stipulate it now, what happens is when those complaints come in later, that's when we end up in lawsuits. And, and we've had a number of those in the city that we inherited from the township days. As you went back, the IUP, the CUP at the time, wasn't clear enough. When somebody heard, what they thought they intended, we, we started arguing intent. And we couldn't go back to a, the, um, the conditions of the permit. And he was saying that if it's a concern, this is the time to bring it up. In the same way, I always tell the person asking for the permit, if you're thinking of expanding, if you're thinking of adding employees or whatever it is, this is the time to ask. Then you have to come back and do it later. So you may not be doing it right now, but if there's any chance this is gonna change, include that now. It's also incumbent on the commission to say, these are the conditions, so if somebody does come back and complain later, hey, they're meeting the conditions, or they aren't. And if they aren't, then there's ramifications to the IUP. If they are, you can explain to the residents, it's exactly as it was defined by the commission and approved by the council. But, yeah, this is always the time when, when somebody's asking for a permit, to make sure you've clearly identified that. Because if it's, if it's simply saying, your stuff just needs to be fenced. We've, we've got a lot of properties here that we would be much less hassled with saying fence it, you know, where it's at.
What he has laid down for carpeting and stuff like that there, I don't know if that's what we really want.
Tarp, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, heavy-duty waterproof tarp.
I don't think anyone markets anything oil-proof, but I could be completely wrong.
That's true, they didn't, they don't.
Gotta sound educated. You can't take it seriously.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess the issue with it is, you know, we're looking at state rules here with MPCA versus, you know, us trying to decide if that's legal or not. So, you know, it is a concern. Um, I guess the license, uh, typically is indicative of someone willing to put the money into the license. You know, they may be using the vehicle more than just putting it in there and ignoring it. But, yeah, there's no question that some of these older vehicles are sitting there leaking and... I, I don't know. I mean, I can, I can ask the MPCA, but I kinda doubt that the tarp is gonna, tarp and the cardboard is gonna do it. I don't know if, you know, I, I mean, there... The minus five is considered many times impervious when we look at a site. So I don't know if that, you know, would meet the MPCA standards or not.
What about the number of vehicles?
There's a, there's approximately forty spots around the perimeter of the fence.
Forty spots, okay.
There's not really any more.
Do people just have open access to go in, get their stuff and get out or?
Yeah, it's all, you're not getting issues with theft or vandalism or anything like that. It's just mostly somebody that knows somebody else, so good people.
So, the one up on the top, the building, that's being rented out?
Yeah.
And then your personal one down there, you don't have anything stored in it that people rent, storage your unit?
Just my stuff, too much of it.
I was basing that on the fact you still have stuff all over your yard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, mayor.
You're just seeing the pictures of the stuff. It doesn't look that bad.
No, I'm not putting you down.
So the, the question on the rental building, is that part of the IUP request, or is that a separate business? The rental building at the top, is that?
Yeah, that's also, yeah, that's also included. Yeah, I mean, it's, that's the only indoor storage that I have.
So, so you're not renting that to another party? You're, you're renting space out in it for indoor storage?
Yeah, yeah, or, you know, or somebody could rent the whole space.
From, from you though, you?
Yeah, from you.
So many questions. I'm not gonna answer.
This is the time to ask them, cuz...
No, just personal ones, like it's in there. How do you need so much space?
Call after and you can come out after eleven.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I do agree with being real cut and dried about it. In other words, if, if... Yeah, I do agree with being real cut and dried about it, in other words, if, if things belong to him, you know, he can store it where the average person would store it, if, if it's something that belongs to someone else, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to say it has to be within this fenced area or within that building number two. Um, you know, I guess this is a container here that you'd have to consider, could that be moved back behind the fence somewhere, and then, you know, what, what could happen with this stuff? But generally, I mean, it is a very neat site.
How long has that container been there?
Um, yeah, I'm sure probably...
Hold on, I have all the photos. It was not there in two thousand thirteen, two thousand four, somewhere between thirteen and fourteen, it showed up.
Two on the south side of the inside of the fence, and then one on the north side of that building, outside of the fence, I mean, it's right, almost part of the building. Those two containers down there, and then the one up on the north side of the building. And that one's...
Are they...
That's just more of my stuff than any of your...
This is what stuff is? Oh, okay. Do you own those?
Yeah.
I mean, I think personally, I think it's reasonable to say that, you know, like, it's been mentioned, but if he has personal items that he's complying with, you know, a typical person in their yard, I'd like to know more about your friend who lives out in the field, but, I mean, again, like...
I don't want the friend living in the field.
You have, you have to understand, we have a lot of that out here.
Correct, I mean, it's a true thing in RVs.
Also, that's a valid concern.
Right, it's a legitimately valid concern, but, I mean, again, what, has anyone complained about it, is that you're having parties over?
No parties, no, I mean, I had quite a party or something down in the house. There's no, like, that's a police matter anyway, it's their work, but there's not anything like that going on back there.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to say that business is kept to the business area, and personnel is kept to the personnel area, now at what point that becomes...
I'm just gonna use the space that I improved for another purpose, so my life has changed, I'm just gonna use the space that's there.
I heard it's good for ostriches.
I'm not going back, yeah, no, I haven't had ostriches, but there's not gonna be any ostriches living on the property.
They're mean.
Okay, number five, Liz, you got your recommendation here. All inoperable and or on licensed vehicles are prohibited from property unless stored on a hard surface or within a structure with a hard surface floor.
So, the question is, you know, what, if you were to pave an area within that fenced area, would you be okay with that, to store the vehicles that are not operable? Or would you prefer not to see them there, or maybe there's an option where he can put down some sort of barrier that I don't know about, or we don't know about?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Gravel is considered a hard surface though, right?
Well, it is considered impervious, yes, when we're calculating hard surfacing, so whether or not that complies with MPCA, yeah. I mean, I can find out, certainly, just, uh...
Open up another camera.
Mr. Chair, is it, is it safe to say that can be, oh my gosh, a condition to any approval, is that, that's verified? I mean, then it's a decision you have to make whether you put the money into it, should it be required, or said vehicle leaves the premise, you know, I mean, that, again, is not something that is up to us, that's up to somebody completely different technically.
And what does, what would that mean, either license it or get it off, is that, I mean, what it would come down to in that?
One scene, depending on the findings, whether it actually is allowed or not, that would be a condition on, you know, that we would put on you, that you have to go through the correct channels to find out if that in fact is allowed, or if you are storing it, does it sit illegally, so...
You know, I think it's, it relates to, Mr. Chair, Piner Stockman, um, the, probably, it does go back to what they call a salvage yard, basically, with inoperable vehicles, and how many are there, they probably do go by number. And anything more than an X a number has to meet certain criteria, you know, you got, similar to, I don't know, small...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not taking parts off and buying and selling, buying jumpers and selling cars off, so it's not a salvage yard, like, out of the junk or anything like that.
Right, it's not a business.
People have stuff that they need to put somewhere and have a place to put it, it seems like a reasonable place to store things.
I believe he mentioned that it room for about forty vehicles in the fence area, in there, right?
Yeah, that was mentioned in the findings, I thought.
It was, yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure.
Chair? Based on sizes and spaces allowed of what the fenced in area is, I figured, you know, if you, if you've considered a space to be a ten by forty, so you can actually move around it, then yes, it comes in about forty spaces available within the fenced area. Now, as far as a hard surface goes, anything that's not operable and has an engine to leak contaminants onto the ground, yes, is a concern and needs to be figured out if we need to require him to not allow them, or to have a more solid surface to catch such contaminants that would go into the dirt. Since it is not his personal land, but he would be contaminating his personal property. Um, the, as far as forty site, you know, forty parkable sites, I think that's a good number, based on the size of the property. Um, I, I see other things being stored, I don't know what they really, really, really are, because it's your personal property again, um, inside of this fenced area. And it's not just trailers, it's not just cars, shipping containers, it's other stuff, smaller stuff.
Yeah, there's some smaller stuff, mostly in the C container, the storage units, you have some small household stuff, or the guy in the furthest south, he had an import business, Hawaiian Treasurers, he's got stock from a store that he had. The other one is a field business that, you know, is stuff from his, from his business that he shut down, was favored, he's cool with business, and then he's got some stuff outside too, and you, you mentioned some of the pile. I, I tarp that up nice and tight and also put that...
Oh, okay.
Spike that into the ground, seven inch spike, so it's, it's on, actually on the east side.
Oh, this, yeah. Yeah, that, that was one of the areas, I was like, what is all that, it looks like a lawn tractor, couple lawn tractors, okay.
Yeah.
And then directly across from that is some other stuff, it looks like some crates and bins and...
Yeah, I'm a creep, that's a creep that I built a fireplace on the house and I had leftover stone, what do you do with, pay a lot of money for?
You could be renting that space out.
I gotta clear it up, so I can...
Okay.
I mean, I guess I can, I can be thankful that it's inside fence, not on the other side of the fence.
Even, you know, everything's in the, in the fence, but just if you look at the big overview, and you mentioned how far this storage yard is from other properties and other, everybody can look out their window and say, oh my goodness, look at that mess, I mean, you can't even see the outside of the fence from any of the neighbors.
Well, if they could, I'm sure they would.
It's right in the center of the property, you know, so it's far away from, it's a big enough property to have that in the center and have it far enough away from anybody, so there don't be any complaints, which I have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, with, with respects to the variance that's being requested, I, I would approve the, um, CUP?
IUP.
IUP, um, for up to forty items to be stored within the fenced area. Now, that doesn't, that would be rented, I, uh, I'm sorry, items being stored that are not personal. Cause then there's those personal items which the neighbors probably don't want to see on the outside of the fence, and it's his, it's his personal property, yes, so storing personal property within the fence line is probably an absolute bonus. Um, yes, there are some conditions that we want to discuss in regards to inoperable vehicles that could leak contaminants onto the ground, so...
Well, should we just go one by one here?
Yes.
I mean, number one, he would prefer that you go till nine PM, um, seven days a week, six AM to nine PM, is that satisfactory to the commission?
Yep, but I do think it needs to say that it can change on the weekends, you know, back to that six to five, if there is reasonable neighborhood, or neighbor complaints. And what I mean by reasonable neighborhood complaints is, uh, you know, some other cities, you end up with neighbors who are just a pain in the ass, and you gotta have quite a bit more, and a reason why they're complaining about it.
I assume they're coming in past five right now, right?
Yeah, what time do you come home from?
I don't, yeah, I don't come from the cabin before five, so, I would...
Different people have different habits, and, yeah, it's just, you know, somebody comes in, drives in the car, and pulls in the camper and drives away in a car, you know, it's just somebody driving in the yard, you know?
How do you condition that, I mean, do you just say hours are limited to six AM to nine PM, you know, seven days a week, unless... Yeah, sorry, unless come, you know...
Unless there's issues, then...
Yeah, unless issues arise.
Uh, yeah, and, you know, honestly, it would be easier for people just to remember too, that it's really kinda dawned, pretty much dawn to dusk.
Right.
And usually after ten PM is when, you know, like, noise ordinances go into effect, so...
There's more people obviously coming and going with campers and boats in the summertime, and they, people are more active, you know, after five o'clock in the summertime than they are in the wintertime, so at dawn to dusk, seeing, I don't hear anybody coming and going at night or very seldom after dark. So, it just seems like dawn to dusk would be good hours that change with the season.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll just, um, for Ms. Stockman, in respect to some of the questions you had, um, number three, yes, I think the six foot fence is, is adequate for the screening. Um, number five, we do want to know if the gravel surface is gonna be, um, enough. I don't think he wants to contaminate his personal property with other people's property, so if we do need to do some improvements to part of the fenced area just for storage of those items that, that are not operable, then something for him to decide if he wants to do, or if he just wants to not allow them on the property. Um, I have no idea, number six, what kind of future equipment would ever be part of this scenario, other than, like, I don't, well, okay, so then, moving down to number eight, limiting on the number of vehicles and containers, trucks, trailers and stuff like that. Um, I guess the, the, the one thing that comes to mind would be limiting, um, large, you know, large scale, uh, construction, um, things, uh, dozers, uh, what do you call it, backhoes, large items.
Construction equipment?
Yes, construction equipment, yep.
So, it's limited to RVs?
Residential uses.
RVs, campers, boats, cars?
Yes.
Well, I mean, there's plenty of people I know that have Bobcats, so I guess...
And that's, but I'm not saying storing it for other people, cause you're not...
Yeah, the spots are ten feet wide, so it's ten feet, ten feet, so there's not room for large dozers.
And, and but that would be the concern, I think your neighbors had about anything being visible over the top of the fence, maybe, is that some was relevant to that?
That's six feet, and RVs are, you know...
Yeah, they're eight to ten, twelve, yeah. So, and I, limiting the numbers, I'm thinking, like, he said, he could probably get forty items in there, which is based on the size, that's accurate, so fight forty, you know, rentable sites, basically. And it's, it's, I mean, it's up to you, cause you live there, um, how you wanna line it up, because you're the one that has to deal with it.
Yeah, it's, it's been good, it hasn't been a real headache for me or for any of my neighbors, and a few extra bucks on the side, you know, and just using certain, using the area that's already been proved for the purpose.
Any other things we should add there?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a question for Ms. Perrow, did you, well, for everyone, I guess, actually, regarding containers, do you wanna limit it to the three we have and say no more, or are you okay with containers occupying those forty spots, or some of those forty spots?
Currently, those containers are his personal property, now, I would say no containers for renters to bring in, if that's what you're asking.
Or even on personal property?
Well, it's his personal property.
We don't, we don't allow, uh, containers on personal property.
Well, if, well, under an IUP, we could, just as we would allow the semi or larger trucks than twenty thousand GDW, yeah.
Well, I mean, realistically, if it's a container or it's an RV, it's still taking up one spot, so that's, I mean, that's really for him to decide on his business whether he wants...
He's got forty spaces.
Yeah, he's got forty spaces.
And the container's eight and a half by forty, so, that's a spy, it's a space.
It's a space.
Is IUP, IPU...
It's laying on the ground.
IUP will not cover the containers behind the building there, cause that's personal.
Well, it will, if you include it, you can include it, or you can ask that it be placed behind the fence, or he stated that some things...
I think it'd be better to have it behind the fence, then people wouldn't complain, the neighbors wouldn't complain.
Neighbors can't see it, it's, uh, that's all, like I said, it's all surrounded by woods, so I, I did read something about screening, you know, fence screening or landscape screening and, you know...
Natural.
Natural, but...
Natural screening, so that's natural screening that's up there, it doesn't look like it, because of the time of year that it's taken, but that's all set trees, um, kind of like a half moon shape, heading company, you know, kinda encircles the whole front of that property.
Yeah. In order to not set precedent, do any other businesses have trailers out, are those, um, what do they call it?
Shipping containers.
Shipping containers outside of...
Storage containers, it's storage units, really, I mean, it's not really...
Outside of their buildings, on their commercial property?
Are there any there?
Commercial, this is residential, so don't, yeah, yeah.
And this is residential?
But this would be an IUP for a business too, so...
Yeah, I don't know, I can't...
I mean, it's been there since approximately two thousand thirteen.
I would have to say if you drive around Nowland, there's gonna be a lot of shipping containers, and I don't think we'd want to get into that discussion of...
That's not the point, though, the point is, are they, are they allowed there or not? I mean, it's not whether people have them or not, but do people have them legally in these types of situations?
Most people have them illegally, they are allowed for six months as a temporary form of moving or storage, um, most of them are illegal.
I mean, is there a huge issue to move it on the other side of the building, or into the fenced area?
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's made my decision, I'm asking, I'm just asking.
They're big and they're heavy and there's not room for it, you know, the forty feet inside the fence is a little bit longer than I would want inside the fence anyway, limits the space to turn around, you can see the storage units kinda hang out, and everything else, and try, try to keep all the other spots to thirty-five feet as much as I can, that's why I put them way down on the corner. And that one up there, that's, it's like a shed, you know, basically an extension of the shed, so like, there's more room for stuff that'll run through.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Probably one of the good models would be what you decided last fall in the commercial district for storage, if you're looking at the conditions, you'd wanna consider at least consistency, you know, I agree, it's a pretty sheltered spot. You know, as long as you got the fencing, you know, the criteria's gonna be similar, you know, if, if you've got impervious service concern... You know, if, if you've got impervious service concerns, and it's really, there's two things, one, going down into the well, you know, your groundwater there. The other one is to run off, and I was looking up the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Their big, big concern is not any outdoor storage, whether it's impervious or not, it's where it's running into. And so if you're not concerned back here and that's gonna get into the groundwater here as much as it would be there. So use the model that was acceptable here to be acceptable there. The difference is you're, you're turning that into, through an I U P, a small commercial area within a residential area. And as long as you're consistent with what you were doing, you should be able to say, here's the number of vehicles, here's the types of vehicles, here's the conditions of those vehicles. And if the service on whether tiny homes or on the, uh, the storage unit were running off into a pond were good enough and met the M P C A, then that should is what I would think. But if you're consistent, you know, so we've already got criteria we've established, apply it here and take care of a lot of this, cause you're already doing it. You're consistent with what else you're doing in the city. The difference is, he's asking for an I U P in a residential area. And, and if you set those conditions and he violates it, then you have a means to do something about it.
Actually, this is, actually, it should be in the commercial area.
Well, but he's asking for an I U P in a residential area, he's got a large chunk of property. Yes, it could be argued, but, but it wouldn't be a business if that was the case, he's got property that this has been working for him for ten, twelve years. Not likely gonna move it to the commercial district. But it's within the, the city's right to offer interim use permits in residential areas. Providing the impact on the neighbors isn't a defense.
If it's the same as a commercial, what's your thing?
Well, I'm saying that you've established this type of outdoor storage in your commercial area already. So you've already got a lot of the criteria down there. He's limited by space by what he's defined in his fencing area. And if you have the same criteria that you applied in those others as far as the types of vehicles and, and the surface, you've already granted a gravel surface over here. It shouldn't be a concern here. If it's okay over there. I'm just saying, you've got a lot of the work done already by what you did over here in the commercial area. It's just applying it to an I U P in a residential area where he's buffered well from his neighbors. If this, if this was over on, right next to his neighbor's house and trucks are coming and going all the times of day and night, he'd have a different concern. He's on a major highway and he's, he's in the middle of his lot. And I would venture to say when the trees are there, you can't see anything. But, but again, you, you've already did the exercise last fall when you did the tiny homes and the, and the storage units over here.
In other words, it'd be wise to pull down what we had for the tiny homes and just apply that to this here?
That, that is the way you could go.
It'd be simpler, wouldn't it?
I just pulled it up for you. Outdoor storage was limited to the, well, we had a shaded area, uh, he had, so he had a designated storage location on the site. Uh, licensed and operable recreational vehicles, seasonal, seasonal storage such as boats, ice houses, storage containers associated with the business, tiny homes and other products, materials, supplies and/or equipment associated with the business. It does not include semi trucks or storage within the grass areas, not so designated. Now, um.
Did it state anything about?
I do recall them.
Surface?
Yeah, tiny homes had just gravel on their storage area as well. I believe which was why we did reference this license and operable. So anyway, that was how it read.
So that was for their own?
That was, well, yeah, and it was referring, so tiny homes produced those tiny homes, which are like R Vs. So they would store some of those, but they also had a business where they allowed people to store, uh, vehicles. And that's, uh, how it read there. Now, in there too, now remember in the industrial park, we have, you know, professionally designed and stormwater ponds, infiltration ponds that collect that stormwater before it runs into the wetlands, so. You know, which is an environmental protection too. Certainly, you know, it's not necessarily feasible, but we do have to find out, you know, what qualifies as a sort of barrier to any pollution out there.
Could you put?
Long way to any wetland there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is, would it be reasonable, I mean, I think that while I agree that there, we already have some rules established that we could easily pull from, I do think it's slightly different. Do you want it turned into a junkyard? No. I mean, are you able to stipulate that a set percentage of it, if it meets the correct criteria, you know, could be inoperable items or? I don't personally understand why people do that, but I can see why there's some attachment and why it's nice to have areas that you can store set items in. I mean, again, it's behind a fence, it's not against someone's garage. But, you know, there's still rules to follow. Could you say, you know, at any time, no more than, you know, so let's just say twenty-five percent of the spaces are contained with, you know?
That's one way, yeah, that's one way to do it.
Inoperable or non-licensed vehicles or equipment, but still has to comply with any rules set up by the and probably around with the M P C A?
Hmm, that's right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Something off subject from the M P C A, just thinking that we said forty sites. Do, do we specify that more personal items removes availability from those forty sites? So basically, as he has his own personal stuff in there, um, that would remove sites for him to be able to rent. So they can't overfill it, was a question.
I don't know what to skip to.
I know.
It's sort of.
I mean, the, the, the area is clearly there now, you wouldn't be able to put forty plus all of his stuff in there, cause people wouldn't be able to get in and out. But I mean, at some point, you know, let's say his stuff is seasonal, he could clearly, you know, stick it down to one side. But again, like, everything's behind a fence, at some point, that becomes of his concern, not my, I mean, mine in particular.
But I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah.
He's got forty ten by forty spaces, and he can fill up those spaces however he chooses, right?
Yeah, I guess that's, I'm agreeing to that.
Okay.
Or you say he just, you know, he maintains that center aisle is open, is how, one way you could phrase it.
That's another way.
Yeah. So that would be easy.
Do we have enough there now?
Yeah, we're good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, let's just clarify, number six. You're not planning on adding another priority truck or anything that you want included, no employees, no?
I have, I'm pretty much full right now, but if somebody moved out an R V and somebody called up and said you have dock truck, I guess it.
Oh, that, yeah.
Five.
I'm talking more about your personal stuff, so like you drive.
No, I'm not a tenant, I'm business owner.
So did I correctly refer to the, um, box trucks, what, is it thirty-six or you said twenty-six today?
Well, the box is a twenty, it's a twenty-six foot, but I mean, the overall length of the truck is thirty-six.
Okay, good, and then, um, the dump truck, oh, one dump truck, fourteen-foot box, that was at, accurate?
Fourteen-foot box, I'm not sure how long the whole truck is.
Okay. So he's got those two things outside that exceed the twenty thousand, um, pound limit. And then do, so then we needed a final opinion on the container north of building two there.
Based on what I understood, it's okay to be there, unless I understood that, huh?
I have no problem with him being there, I like shipping containers, I don't have any here, but, uh, but I do, I like them, I think they're great, you can lock them up decent or.
Yeah.
They're waterproof, yep, exactly.
Yeah, it's awesome there, that's for sure.
I mean, does that allow for additional ones? I mean, at what point, and I'm asking, this is a question, this isn't necessarily.
It's, it's limited, so it's limited to the one that's there.
One outside the fence.
One outside the fence.
Is that in?
Cause that's.
Does that go along with what other people are doing? I mean, are people limited to a quantity of them? Or are they just limited to the barriers of them being screened in or, cause I mean, if it's just barriers, he could probably easily fit two or three more right alongside of it.
Well, no, if it's.
At what point?
If it's permanent, it has to be covered under an I U P such as this.
Okay.
So if it's not, then you're only allowed like six months, you can haul it in, put it wherever you want, load it up and move, you know?
Yeah, if you wanna put a condition on one, one C container or one, uh, storage unit outside the fence like that, no more or a lot, it wouldn't have any issues with that. Storage units all over the.
Okay, all right, one friend.
One storage unit and one friend.
One friend.
I get fascinated by why people do things, what is that guy doing up there?
You're in the block, Australia.
I mean, I've never been to your property before, do you guys ride dirt bikes out there?
With Jeep is what I drive, and I understand it's not, so we're not supposed to ride dirt bikes out there.
Oh, sorry.
We have an ordinance against it.
I do have a Jeep that I drive around out there, I've got some hills.
Hey, listen, I moved now that's.
I was trying to do that, wasn't I?
Yeah, Charlotte, you're done.
I make a motion to, um, accept the I U P with the facts, the findings and the facts, recommendations that we have had. Um, with some changes to the number five, number six and number eight on the list.
And number one.
Oh, and number one, thank you, yes, yeah, I knew there was one, okay, yes, with those changes.
And could you please include in your motion to direct the planner, I guess, or somebody staff-wise?
For number five?
To, yeah.
Yeah, yes, cause yes, that's what, that's what I wanted to, yep. Yes, so the planner to also check into the M P C A and just see what we can do about that, um, since there's no, what do you call that, the, the?
Impervious, hard surface?
But the, the storm.
Storm water.
Pond or whatever, thank you, the thing, yes, since he doesn't have one and how it affects.
Okay, Commissioner Pearl made this motion, does somebody want to second this motion? Commissioner Moon will second it, any further discussion, yes, Mayor.
Just for clarification, Mr. Berry, you were saying one, five, six and eight, what, what exactly were you saying?
Oh, we had it written down. Um, one was gonna be changing of the hours, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Planner Stockman. Changing of the hours for Mondays through, or seven days a week, nine, or six to nine, unless it becomes an issue, I think. Um, and number five was checking in on the gravel surface and making sure that it's okay if there's inoperable vehicles to be sitting on that. Unless, if there's not, then that needs some paved area or the owner doesn't let the rental of an inoperable, inoperable vehicle to be placed in the storage area. Um, number six, I did not understand what could be a future equipment, so I didn't have anything on that. And then number eight was, uh, limiting the number of sites to be rentable for, 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 um, inside the area, and we've decided that ten by forty is considered a site. And that would be forty available sites within the fenced area.
And one storage unit outside the fence.
Oh, yes, and the storage unit outside the fence.
So then do you want us to eliminate six, since there's no?
I, I don't know what it would be.
Like, there's nothing, so there's nothing additional to be added, you haven't defined it, just eliminated, is that?
Sure.
Is that just to clarify, I get what you're saying?
I have, yes. I had no clue what number six was supposed to be.
I think it's two questions.
It is two questions, but I don't know what it means.
Do I eliminate them both?
We've got, covered the foreseen changes with some of the other stuff that if he, if he fails to comply, he's gonna be coming back in. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number six is gone.
Bye-bye.
Yep.
See you.
That's your motion.
Yeah, could you get it all down?
So who seconded?
Uh, Commissioner Moore.
Oh, Mo.
Mo.
I did.
Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll call for a poll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I can't believe we can't ride dirt bikes here. Well, you can, just don't do it repetitively. Don't annoy your neighbors.
Continue to, to the next meeting, uh.
You would've realized it when your neighbor was doing it before you moved in. All day and all night. One kid would get off, the next kid would get on.
The only thing that's funny is golf carts, of little teenagers.
No, this, this was, it's just, just over the hill from here, just over the block to you.
Oh, where the? The gravel pit is?
No, it's, it's the property just north of you on the other side of Jensen.
Thanks, Paul, we'll get you the revised list and then I'll let you know when the next.
Really?
My kid would get off. And that's, that's what we have, but four of them.
You gotta go through council next.
When some of them got older, they were.
Probably have you come, yeah, I'll just.
He's sure, now they're trying to have.
What they say. Would you be old enough to keep it for small areas? I don't know.
Families are writing something.
Prefer to do it.
You can write it?
Okay. Before you change it out.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I know there's a lot of.
It's a email, do you want us to sit here and?
Oh, did you?
What happened with the cars?
Okay, I mean, I guess for not knowing, I assumed you had to have so much. Sorry. The mayor was talking to me, you don't just stop talking.
It'd be easy to take it out, throw it away, put it in the old homes, you know, I don't, I don't know what would be.
I really want a dirt bike.
It'd be expensive.
I hope my husband watches this on YouTube.
Yeah, you don't wanna do the whole thing.
Hey, Liz. You wanna cover the, them three things, you got upcoming projects?
Oh, okay.
We'll adjourn them.
Sorry, I'll talk to you. Yep, thank you.
You know, put up the council.
Yeah.
You got through the easy people.
Don't scare him.
I only tell the truth.
Well, yeah, we would like the planning and zoning involved in the, another comp plan workshop date, if anyone wants to throw out some options. The annexation hearing is pushed way out until September. Pardon me, maybe? You said maybe? Okay. Um, yeah, so that's kind of an unknown right now, but we did extend our review period for the comp plan in general. It was supposed to be done the end of this year, we extended it through two thousand nineteen. So we don't have to rush and we can get all these other unknowns figured out. Uh-huh.
So, um, meeting a missed?
Yes.
The workshop I missed?
Mm-hmm.
That happened and you guys are, you didn't do an extension from it now?
That did happen.
We didn't get very far.
Well, the Met Council was.
Very little bit done, so you didn't miss on nothing.
Mostly missed.
A lot got done. A lot got done, come on.
You need to understand, it had a lot to do with the annexation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Those are things that the Met Council had to answer, there's a reason, it seemed like Liz and Bob were asking similar questions.
Okay, so.
They, they need to be on record.
Met Council is, um, interesting.
Yeah, they had to be on record in answering.
Right, right now, you don't want to be the one that upsets them.
You're right.
When they're going to weigh in on their annexation.
I've never sat quiet for so long. Can't say a word. Because he's right, that's what, it was like four of them talking.
We apologize, but, uh, we didn't know that was going to happen when that, when we didn't, you know, Bob realized he should show up too, and, uh, there were specific things from the legal standpoint that we need to clarify.
It was really, I thought it was really informational, I mean, from a standpoint of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely watch it, then, because I was wondering.
It should be on YouTube.
Well, it has a lot to do with, that's why we had this.
We're very behind on minutes, because there's been so many meetings, but yes, we're working on it.
Okay.
All right, let's keep rolling.
Okay.
Say yes, uh, is that all?
At any rate, uh, what is, well, what does your, uh, you know, June look like? I don't know.
Summer, gone.
I know, but.
June and July are tough for me, I've got, uh, I've got graduations and all sorts of.
Well, this is usually during the week. Just as a FYI.
Well, we did it on, what, a Wednesday last time, so does a Wednesday work for people?
Wednesday, ironically, does, but, bitch.
I play softball, but I can skip it.
It's a bad night for me.
What about Mondays?
Oh, right, Dale, Wednesday's bad?
That's my church night, wasn't it?
Oh, I see, sorry, I thought you were kind of joking.
Separation of church and state, Dale.
Okay, well, and, uh, and C, you can strike seven, C, there was potentially a property owner that was going to ask for a zoning text amendment, but it's not going to happen. He decided that it was easier to move his building.
So, did you say the comp plan got pushed a year?
Yeah, we've asked for extra time, yeah, to complete it.
We can't do anything until we know what our work is.
So, with that being said, does that mean we couldn't take care of it this fall? Like, extend it after the summer?
There'll be some meetings throughout the.
Well, we, I'm saying extending the workshop.
Well, there's some things that we can do, I'm sure, before, before this annexation hearing, I'm sure there's.
Right, I get that, I'm just wondering if there's, okay, I mean, nobody gave a date, so that's why I'm asking.
Realistically, yeah, we could probably wait, except, you know, there's a mandatory six-month review where you have to get it done and get it out to all the adjoining, uh, communities and jurisdictions to look at, so, and then you, you know, so that takes up half a year right there. Although sometimes, you know, you can convince them to give back to you sooner, but.
So I would say probably see what the council can do first and then put it out to the patient and see if it's available.
That's fine, I just thought somebody did.
How are you guys more important?
Good, 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 make as many decisions.
I'm available until I have to.
The what?
Is that all of, is that all you got then, Liz?
That's it.
Okay, I'll take the last motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Return.